Actually call the meeting to order and um. Can we uh? I can't hear. Can someone talk so I could hear?
Yeah, hello?
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if I had. Can we rise for the pledge allegiance?
True.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item of business is some resignations. This is for information only. Um, the Affordable Housing Committee, we have the resignation of Carolyn Makeover. Um, and her resignation date was official on February fourteenth and the Bike and Ped Committee. Karen Seacrest, um, her resignation date was March seventeenth. I just want to thank them both. For their service on these committees and for their time.
I would second that. Thank you so much.
And um, the next item on the agenda is item number four. To hear and consider and act upon the filing appointments, um. The Affordable Housing Committee, we have Erb, um, lead pillar of Spruce Street. Whose term will run uh till eleven twenty-five. He will replace Carolyn. Makeover who just resigned and we have Mary. Tommy uh Strido, I think she's on the line, who is uh. Who is uh going to uh be serving uh the remaining pe- a part of this term. And she will replace Bruce Pringley. Who resigned from the Bike and Ped Committee and I believe both um. Both Erb and um Mary are on the line.
Hi Brenda, I'm here.
Uh hi Mary.
Hi.
Hi. I had I had the pleasure of seeing Mary um this Saturday at CrossFit. So, she's not only a bike and ped uh uh expert, she's a crossfitter.
Try to keep active.
And you do. And uh we have Erb on the line and I just wanna thank you both uh for stepping up to serve our community. I do say this whenever we have appointments. Um, it is truly appreciated by the town. The amount of people who do step up and volunteer their time for the betterment of our community and I and I just want to emphasize volunteer. Of their time and I want to thank you both. Um, Erb, I know you'll be a a welcome addition to the Affordable Housing Commission. Um. You've been so active for so many years on these items, especially seniors, um, which I think is a really vitally important. Area that we should be focusing on in town. So um. Welcome both and I will open it up for either one of you if you'd like to um make any comments to the board.
Hey Brenda, I think we have to move it and put it before us first.
Okay, motion to uh to accept.
Uh seconded.
Okay.
Go ahead, Erb.
Uh sure, uh I I and and Brenda, really appreciate the nomination and and great to to see Tom and everyone. Um. Uh, I I think this is a really important committee. Um. Uh, you know, what we're all focused obviously on trying to find uh. Moratorium, you know, moratorium for for A thirty G and the impact it's had on our town, but I think probably more important is finding. You know, reasonable housing solutions and options for so many segments of our community that that, you know, that need housing, you know. Certainly seniors, but also, you know, workforce housing, um millennials and and so forth. It's a real need and. As as our values have gone up, which is, which is, you know, good news for for many of us, it's it it creates even more stress in terms of finding to. Being able to find those solutions. So I I really, really appreciate the opportunity to. Get involved. I think there's an awful lot of work to be done and looking forward to rolling up my sleeves and and doing it and. I did want to say in in a little bit of a way, it's it's kind of a bittersweet moment because I thought that Carrie McOver did some wonderful work. Um. On that committee and and even and also in terms of suggesting directions for um. For for Planning and Zoning Commission and in terms of looking for uh housing. Uh, options and solutions that we we could all embrace and uh. So I think she's 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 great, but uh it's it's I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Erb. And Mary, do you have any uh any comments you would like to offer or anything you'd like to say?
Sure, yes. Um, I'm sorry that the video isn't doesn't seem to be working. Um, but uh yeah, I'm very excited about this. I I um am an avid walker. I walk all over the town and I I appreciate, you know. The walkability and the sidewalks and the accessibility that we have. Um. I spent fourteen years working at Harvard University and while I worked there, I was part of the commuter choice program there. Uh, we were looking at increasing bike lanes and visibility and um, you know, this making the city of Cambridge much safer. So. I'm really excited to be able to help do that here and participate and learn what I can do.
Thank you, Mary. Tom, do you have any uh comments?
Well, I'd like to thank both of you for stepping up, obviously. Um, you know, certainly there's been a lot of activity on on the strategic plan in town. Uh, there's been a lot of activity on on making us more livable. And certainly on the affordable housing side, uh even just last week, there was activity between that organization and and the um town planning and zoning. And I and I couldn't agree more with the importance of of both those committees and Erb, all I have to say is that I think Brenda is telling you. You will have to be at CrossFit next weekend, just just so that you're aware. It seems. A prerequisite now, so you need to be there for uh. But congratulations to both of you and thank you for uh taking the opportunity to serve in a formal way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Flynn, uh I think uh you need to come and join Mary and I.
Right after Erb.
All right, well, uh again, thank you both. Um, and thanks for taking the time to be on the meeting today.
Thank you.
All right.
I look forward to working with everybody, meeting the team.
Yeah.
Awesome. All in favor of this uh of these two appointments?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I do want to mention, I should have mentioned at the beginning, um, and uh select woman Lefkowitz uh wasn't. Sure she was gonna be able to make the meeting. Uh, she is traveling. She wasn't sure she was gonna be able to sign up, but she may at some point. So I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Make that um announcement. Um, you are, Mary and Erb, you are both welcome to stay, but you are free to leave. It's up to you. I don't want you to feel like you're obligated. Um, so I just wanted to say that. And our next item, number five, um. Yeah, can I get a motion to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into a proposed contact contract with Fitztral? And Halliday, um, FHI Studio to provide labor materials and all else necessary to assist the. Town Planning and Zoning Department in the final stages of completion of the plan of conservation and development to modernize and update Fairfield zoning regulations. For the uh total amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-one eight thirty-two. Um, and the contract number is listed on the agenda, if you can remember, Tom. Uh, this is the funding that we approved, the ARPA funding to assist our zoning department so that they could uh get this P O C D. Uh, up and running much quicker than their department would be able to on their own with all the work that they have. So this was really a home run um to have that ARPA money and to assist our department and this is a valuable document um to have. For our community in the planning stages moving forward.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
And and I'll also, Bren, if I can at this point, if it's appropriate, I'll I'll uh make a motion to waive the reading of. Item six through uh. Got six through nine on here.
Okay, uh I second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Sh- um, go right ahead. I'll let Mr. uh Went speak to this if if that's okay, Ms. Uh, Ms. Kupchak.
Absolutely.
Uh, good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity uh to be here this afternoon. First, I'd like to thank Gerald and his team um for getting us this far. Uh, to the stage of the proceedings and uh thank the um, the board for approving a slug of money. Uh, from the ARPA funding for this project. We are excited to work with FHI Studios. We have some familiarity with their traffic side of their shop. But they by far, uh in our estimation, had the best response to our RFP. They identified on their own three big issues uh when we sat down with them for their oral presentation. Uh, which were spot on to what we thought our needs were and they identified those without even discussing it with us was. Number one, issues around transit oriented development. Number two, targeting and maintaining commercial opportunities. And number three. Uh, along the lines of what Erb just discussed, examining uh housing options. So we think those are important. Um, opportunities for us to consider in this effort. They had uh excellent reviews by colleague planners that we spoke to. Um, they had a more in-depth option for the regulatory rewrite that we were looking for, so. Their proposal was the most attractive to us and they and with all of that, uh they still were a little over twenty thousand dollars under the. Um, allotted budget. So we're excited to get underway working with FHI. Emmeline and I are happy to answer any questions you might have.
So I assume that these uh, this went through our proper RFP process and Mr. Baldwin, you're. You're comfortable with the uh contract for this item?
Yes, it was uh, it was a. A very good contract actually and one that could serve as a template for others in the future. It's very good.
Okay, and Mr. Foley, anything to add?
I know it did go through the RFP process. We had four firms that submitted proposals. And as Jim eloquently stated, uh this one, this company was by far um had submitted the best proposal and had the best fit. For what the town was looking to do.
Right, and it's uh was already noted, it was within the budget allotted for this amount by, it was under by, I think, Jim, you said twenty grand, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Quick, quick question for you on this. Um, Mr. Went. It is interesting, where are you guys in this process right now? And when we say, you know, we want them to help us with the final stages. What what does that look like and how long does that take? Because obviously, we're under considerable pressure with with the state related to all the. The zoning um. Proposals that are out there. So I I think the citizens would really like to know. How proactive is the town being and and how quickly are we moving this forward? I thi- I think I'd like to give people some comfort if in fact we can.
Sure, I'm all parts to that answer. Uh, we had done and I had provided some testimony on a bill that was up last week.
Yeah.
Specifically regarding transit oriented development and we made reference and provided a link to our transit oriented development plan. That was a um. A joint effort between the Economic Development Commission and the Plan and Zoning Commission that was adopted in twenty nineteen. And we're in the midst of implementation on some of those recommendations. So we we've done that. Piece with respect to the P O C D in particular. And we had um three very well attended um outreach sessions. That drilled into with tabletop exercises prior to the pandemic and and that kind of stalled our efforts. Uh, public engagement going forward. One and another reason why we liked FHI is they have experience. In stepping into a project that had already been had already been begun, not starting it from uh from scratch. So I believe uh and Emmeline can jump in if I don't have the schedule in front of me. But I believe it's a nine-month um time horizon for the P O C D update. Uh, the initial phases of the regulation work is is gonna happen in parallel with that and then the later stages. Of that regulation rewrite is gonna be somewhat dependent on the recommendations of the P O C D. It itself because we're hoping that that next phase of the regulation rewrite will help us. When the implementation phases of the recommendations of the plan. So I think it's an eight to nine month. P O C D horizon and then similar timeframe for the initial work on the regulations and then another six to eight months thereafter on the on the regulations.
So what is the, what does this process look like? Who gets involved? Who approves it? How does the general public? Um, get informed about it and and how does it address some of the issues we're seeing at the state level?
Well, the out, the the outreach that we've already done uh in the in the um planning sessions that we had, we asked folks. To vote on on topics that they thought needed additional public outreach and then. Recreation, economic development and housing were the areas that were targeted that we expect to have some targeted outreach. So there will be a um a website established for this um process and we will be having some specific public. Outreach that we're gonna try to cast the broadest net uh for attendance. We've been successful in doing that thus far. We just haven't had the capacity to do it in-house. Since um the pandemic.
But we take advantage of the Park and Recreation Commission and we take advantage of the strategic plan that they're working on for. With their outside consultants at this point. Is that taken into consideration? I what I'm trying to get to is it a coordinated, you know, how coordinated is is the effort? You know what I mean?
I'll let uh Emmeline jump in on that if she wants. We uh but we've already done some of that, but the short answer is yes, but I'll let Emmeline uh respond to that.
Yes, for the um P O C D, the the consultant is um, you know, we will work with them to ensure that we have consistency amongst the other. Planning efforts that have already been completed. Um, as Jim mentioned, we already did a T O D study, so we're not looking for them to recreate. Or replicate that work. Um, you know, we understand that the and and actually Jim and I have attended one of the meetings for. Um, you know, the uh Recreation Department and their planning process to update their master plan as well. So. Um, you know, we just hope to take some of those um goals and directives from some of their planning um. Processes and kind of integrate those into the larger P O C D. Um, their master plan may get more specific than our P O C D would.
I would think it would, yes.
Yes, just generally speaking, but uh we can certainly, you know, pull some of their primary goals and um. Uh, principles out of that as 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 we would for other documents that need to be consistent with the P O C Ds such as. The hazard, the regional hazard mitigation plan as well.
Yeah, I I think that's critical. I just want to make sure that there's a um. A lot of coordination between these various town entities. One of the things in in. Uh, the first select woman has alluded to it before. We have so many boards and commissions in this town. So many diffused management structure in this town. My concern would be that we're not aligned appropriately somehow. Right? So I want to make sure that the that we are and I think it's great that you had these public meetings in the past. Um, I think now you need to work with the departments internally or or your consultant needs to make. You know, work with the departments internally and make sure that you're completely aligned and taken into consideration. I completely agree with what you're saying. That it's not gonna be at the level of specificity, you know, as parks and rec is gonna be, as hazardous is gonna be, but I think it's, your plan has to be informed. By those other plans. So. Uh, I look forward with the Board of Selectmen, get a presentation. On this document at a certain point and I would assume what happens is when the document. When this is done, it's gotta be formally adopted. I would guess by town planning and zoning, is that how this works, Jim?
Correct, yeah. We will certainly uh inform this body of any public engagement sessions, so you're you're all welcome to participate. But yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission has to adopt it and also uh the Board of Selectmen has review uh authority over this as well.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that review happens if you don't mind.
Yep.
I I, that's critical to me because obviously this is part of the economic engine of the town, so.
We we agree completely and look forward to working with you on that effort.
Thank you. Thanks to you both.
I would encourage you, Tom and uh both, when Nancy um. I I will uh share with her to to engage in the in that process, to watch those meetings online. I did have the opportunity to attend. Uh, some of their public sessions when they had them before COVID hit. They were very informative and I I want to commend both. Uh, Emmeline and Jim for their hard work on those. They really engaged the community. A lot of people came to them, provided tons of input and obviously they. They are interacting with the other departments every single day, talking about these items and uh engaged with the community and and as. Jim is um part of, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission, listens to all the. Applications as well, aware of what the community's concerns are about many different items. So I definitely encourage uh you and Nancy to both. Tune in to those meetings or at least watch them online uh after the fact.
Yeah, I have. I would just want to make sure that they're informed. I've been around long enough to know. Uh, and the thing that comes to mind is, you know, the Board of Education, when we redid Fairfield Woods Middle School. And then six months later, the town approached us about redoing uh the library uh at Fairfield Woods and it and it was just. Not a coordinated effort and I'm not implying that it's not a coordinated effort here. I just want people to hear my sense of. Uh, let's make sure it is so that we're not, you know, adopting something and then making sure later on that it or finding out later on that something wasn't taken into consideration. So I thank you for your efforts.
Right, if there's no further comment, um, all in favor of this item?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks and good luck with your project.
Thanks for your support.
Okay, our next item, uh, we do have a wave uh waving of the uh item, but I do want to just give a couple of details for any public that might be listening. This is um uh to con- uh consider uh uh an authorized purchasing authority uh to contract with Greenway Properties. For um. To perform athletic field maintenance. We do this um, I think, every year, Anthony. Uh, if I'm correct, or maybe this is for additional, so eight for eight hundred and ninety at fifty. And um, A- Anthony and uh Angeles are both on the line for this item. And it has obviously.
I'm sorry.
RFP process and purchasing has reviewed it and gone through the proper channels and um. And the contract was obviously uh uh reviewed by the town attorney. So I'll open it up. Did you have something to say, Gerald?
Brenda, you skipped item six.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was trying to move along quicker than.
That's okay.
I apologize. Okay, this one is um regarding uh the underground storage tanks, uh removals under Independence Hall. And under Smith Richardson Golf Course Maintenance Building. Uh, this contract will not exceed twenty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-one ninety. Um, and it did go through the RFP process and the contract was reviewed by the town attorney. And can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So I was um, guys, I was actually surprised.
Want to say, we have James Ryan on the line, um, who does our building maintenance to discuss this item.
Yeah, was this, is it, this is uh new information or was this planned? Because I don't remember talking. Previously, I know we, this is coming out of operating budgets and that's fine, but I don't remember talking about these tanks previously at these locations. This is kind of new information or or was this well-known and well-established and planned?
James, would you like to?
Yeah, this is um, I don't consider it new information. They've been there. We did uh replace the boilers and go. To natural gas uh last year, if you remember, and uh we abandoned this um. Underground storage tank with heating oil and we converted to natural gas. So not new information, just uh it's out of the operating budget. It was. Um, you know, it was, it was planned.
Curious, why wasn't the Smith Richardson uh removal done as part of that overall project up there, given that we just redid that whole area?
We were talking about the maintenance garage up off eleven, uh.
Yeah, I see that, but there was, we didn't, it it wasn't uh contemplated during any of the work that was done up there previously. Is that right?
It wasn't contemplated. No, it was not included. It's um. It's to fill the mowers and uh tractors. Um, considered separate if if you ask me, but um. Yeah, it it really what's driving it is the life expectancy of these tanks, Tom. Uh, we're, you know, we're uh. We're at their life expectancy, so.
And are we putting new ones in up there? Is that they, are we putting other ones in? How how does that handle going forward? Just real quick.
We went with uh concrete above ground.
That's what I was.
Within a tank called uh uh convalt tanks. Um, three, one for gasoline, one for diesel. And one for heating oil.
Okay.
And uh, a thousand gallons, a thousand gallons and five hundred gallons accordingly. And uh, and the one for Independence Hall is, what's just a combined bid. Uh, it was basically uh. Abandoned the tank, we're not putting anything back there.
Okay, somebody, somebody's got some background noise if they can mute. I don't know who that is unless that's you, Jim.
That's, that's me. I apologize. We're getting ready to wrap up here.
Got it. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, James. No further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yeah, now you're on to seven, which is Greenway.
Yes, James, I I think you might be uh. Free to go. Yeah. Unless you want to stay. Okay. Item number seven, um, can I get a motion to approve uh the item that I was just speaking about earlier about with Greenway? Eight ninety uh fifty. This is for uh all the labor, materials and equipment uh to perform our athletic field maintenance. Uh, for the town. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I'm moved.
Second, and we have Anthony here and Angeles.
Hey guys, do you want to speak to the item to start and then I'll ask a couple of questions?
Sure, I'll handle it first, Ange. Um, yeah, we put this out, the uh maintenance of the athletic field out to bid, RFP, uh had two submissions. Greenway came in at the lowest. Um, they were our previous contractor. We were pleased with their work. Um, and decided to offer them a new contract.
Angeles? Anything to add?
No, I would just echo what Anthony said. We we've been happy with their work in the past. We thought putting it out the bid, we might be able to get some better pricing. And we actually did, so we're pleased to move forward.
So you guys were, I I know there was a rocky start last year a little bit with the fields and I'm not at all saying it was Greenway's uh. Problem at all, but I I do remember a fair amount of concern at the beginning of the season and you guys. Feel that by the end of the season, it was all sorted down and their timeliness and responsiveness was appropriate?
Yes, I I think we had some growing pains at the beginning of the contract, but we worked through them and we've been happy working with them since.
And Anthony, how's it working now with that function reporting under you? I know there was with the leagues last year and and there's been a lot of focus. On fields overall around town and I just wanna, you know, make sure that we're comfortable, that we're um. You know. Improving the fields each and every year, because it's been, it's become a hot button around town and I and understandably so based on some of the conditions. Of some of the fields that I've seen in the past.
Yeah, well, I'm comfortable with the work Greenway is doing and they're um overly communicative. Um, I think the leagues have been happy with that aspect. Um, as far as the quality of the fields, we live in New England. Our school, our fields are on school property. We use only organics. Uh, so we're very limited in the quality of grass that we can grow. Um, seeing that today, I'm looking at the calendar, it's March twenty-first and I'm already getting complaints about fields that aren't even open. So am I gonna get complaints over the next month? Absolutely. Uh, best I can do is hope the weather holds out and the grass grows in and these fields don't get beat up too bad in the mud. Um, but no, overall, we're we're happy with the contract and the job that Greenway is doing.
Yeah, um, to your points, Anthony, just so that we, as we talk about this holistically. Um, obviously, your strategic plan is gonna address some of the, some of the longer-term issues you're talking about with these fields. Is that correct?
I would like to think that that's correct. Um. It just depends on what the study is gonna show. I think it's gonna show, I think it could show a couple of different things, but you know, I don't want to speak out of turn without any um. Gather to back that up at the moment, so.
But that's the goal. I guess what I'm saying is this is short-term. Make sure that the fields are at least as playable as they can be, given the concerns that you raised. Then the second issue is what's the strategic plan? I'm gonna come out and say, part of the strategic plan is gonna say, this is what we recommend with some of your fields. This is a game plan going forward and then on the long term is about funding it and what's gonna happen with the fields as as we move forward, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Um, I've got nothing further on this item for now.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item, number eight, this is regarding um. A proposed contract with Aqua Turf Irrigation, uh material labor equipment, all necessary to build, design, install that new flash. Uh splash pad, we all know. Was destroyed during uh Storm Ida and this is in the amount, uh no, um, this will not exceed for combined grand total. More than two hundred and eleven, one twenty-five. And um, the, there was the necessary, all necessary RFPs. Uh, the process was followed by purchasing and the contract was reviewed by our town attorney. I will open it up for questions.
Uh, some of this relates to the. Five hundred and fifty that we approved just uh some time ago or it doesn't. It's not about fixing anything. Anthony, explain how this works together then, because I see you shaking your head.
Yeah, no, this is, this is a completely separate project that was funded um in, I believe, February of twenty-one. Through the non-recurring capital process. Um, we are just now getting back to our second time of going out to bid. Um, we are just now getting back to our second time of going out to bid and getting numbers and supply chain and. It's just been uh, a headache to say the least.
When is the anticipation that this would be completed then, Anthony, do you think?
Well, the way we put out the RFP was we wanted completion by Memorial Day. The contractor still thinks he can deliver that, the one that we're working with now, this Aqua Turf. Um, obviously if he hit any kind of roadblock or supply chain issue, which he's saying he's not going to hit, he's saying he has this stuff in stock. Uh, or access to it, so, but worst case, this would be probably a July one open, worst case scenario, so.
Okay. All right, I've got nothing further on this item.
Madam, first select woman, if, if I may, just to, to advise the uh, the board, this is Attorney Baldwin. Um, there are uh, details uh, about the contract that need to be um. Corrected and the, the version that's presented to you in your packet is uh, not considered to be sufficient. And uh, I would propose that the board consider and act upon this matter. Uh, with the contingency that the terms are negotiated to the satisfaction of the town attorney and the Parks and Rec Department. Ultimately, that's what, what is asked of me uh, every time a contract comes before you and, and I uh. Make sure that they are appropriate, uh, and I assure you that that would happen. With your approval today based along with that contingency.
Jim, can I ask you, what, what types of items? I know you, we don't want to negotiate in, in public or anything, but what, or. Whether it's even negotiation or just.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just give you an example. Uh, they used what's called an AIA. Uh, standard contract agreement, which we see all the time between the owner and the contractor. Uh, but one glaring uh, issue is that there's reference to an architect that typically oversees. Construction projects and here there is no architect listed because there is not one. However, there are still terms and conditions which relate to uh, a certain responsibilities of the architect and. We simply uh, intend to insert the town i- in place of the architect so that all those conditions. Uh, in the contract, the standard contract are um, are in favor of the town. A- as though we were the architect. That's just one example. There, there are some other uh, rather minor details, none of which I think uh. Is problematic whatsoever. If it, if it were, I wouldn't be proposing uh, what I have now to you.
About how many items are there, Jim? Just so that we know.
One, two, three, four.
Uh, four or five.
Okay. And there, there are items such as that which are not relevant to A, the amount. B, the insurance. C, the timeliness. It, it's more of inconsistencies based on how this is going to be managed, if I understand you correctly.
Yes, that's correct, uh, Mr. Flynn. It's just to kind of button it up and make sure that they're um, that it's. Written in a more clear fashion.
Yeah, so what, can you propose the exact language you would like on this and I'm, I'm willing to move that forward?
With the approval, with the contingency that term, terms are negotiated to the satisfaction of the town attorney. And the Parks and Rec Department.
I will uh, make that motion that we amend the item to include that verbiage.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now it's before us is amended, yeah.
Is there any other discussion on the item as amended?
No, I'm good. Thank you. And Anthony, thank you for the clarification on the, how this item fit in with the five fifty or what have you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Thank you, Anthony. Um, the next item um, is uh, water pollution control, although we will um, need an amendment on this item. Um, the amount that we were given was not uh, uh, accurate. And it, instead of two hundred and twenty, it is one hundred and twenty. So um, I will make, uh, I will ask for a motion. To amend, item number nine, to one hundred and twenty thousand.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion as amended is on the floor. This is regarding uh, WPCA fund balance to complete the microgrid project. And John Bodie is on the line.
I'm here, I just can't get the video seen, but can you hear me?
Yeah, sure, John.
Okay. Um, this, this money the WPCA approved to finish the microgrid, which got stalled out. Because of the hardening project and the contaminated soil. So this will cover. Labor material to finish the job.
Why um, why, why the adjustment from two twenty to one twenty? Was this just a typo on the agenda or did we get some bad data or what?
No, no, it was, it was a typo.
Got. How much is left in the fund?
Uh, the WPCA fund balance?
Yeah.
I do not know.
Who would have that?
I, I have it, Mr. Flynn.
Great. How much is left, Jared, if you don't mind?
As of today, uh, thirteen point seven seven five million.
Okay. Okay, so this brings it down to thirteen point five after this approval or thirteen point six?
That's right.
Okay. And how long, and when's this project going to be completed then? We approve this one twenty, how long till it gets completed?
It's supposed to be done in September.
Okay. And again, it was just delayed because of COVID and everything else going on with that.
That's correct. And then the prices skyrocketed and everybody knows that deal.
Yeah. All right, I, I have no further questions on this one item.
Okay, very good. Um, so uh, well, I'm not sure I did, did, uh, let me ask for a motion uh, on this item as amended.
Uh, so moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And the next item is also WPCA. Um, this item requires, uh, both items actually require Board of Friends and RTM approval. Um, this is on um, uh, five hundred and forty thousand from the fund balance to replace the compost agitator. And the dolly at the wastewater treatment facility. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, and again, John Bodie is on the line.
Yes, the town processes all our sludge through the compost building, mixing it with wood chips from across the street. This machine is sixteen years old. It's starting to deteriorate. It's starting to uh, break down internally as far as the metal. Um, we were hoping to delay till the upgrade, but that's at least three, four years away. It seems prudent to place it as the cost to process our sludge. Uh, liquid or cake is quite expensive and we can't really find a place to get into.
So in other words, you can't get it, if this goes down, you don't, there's no other places in order to process it. Is that what you're trying to?
That's correct. They, they, they're, they're so backed up, it's, it's, it's mind-numbing, so.
Quick, quick question on this. Um, I, I know we, you know, you, you hit the nail on the head in terms of this whole area is going to be redone in. You know, several years. Um, is this being done in such a way that this can be repurposed and we're not throwing um. Good money after bad here?
Uh, this, this machine will be put in and it'll run at least another sixteen years. Um, nothing needs to be done. It won't be repurposed. It won't be removed or anything, so.
Got it.
It's here for the long haul.
Okay. I've got nothing else on this item.
Okay. All in favor of this item?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is um, can I get a motion to consider and act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector?
No, we have an, we have the one before it.
I'm sorry.
No problem. And I didn't move this one to not be read because I didn't, I stopped at ten, I think, so.
Well, it's not too long. Um, a motion to uh, here and consider and act upon the request from the Engineering Department to approve. As part of the Commerce Drive and State Street Extension Bridge Project and appropriation in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to pay for fees associated with the right-of-way process. Impermanent temporary easements related to the project, of which a hundred percent shall be covered by the MetroCog LoSiP grant. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, and we do have Bill on the line.
Hey, Bill.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, this request is for the town to accept and expend funds for the Commerce Drive Bridge Commitment to Fund. Letter and the project authorization letter. Uh, this new grant offered by MetroCog and DOT is for the right-of-way process for the bridge project. Um, this is an auth- an additional authorization to receive a reimbursable grant for two hundred thousand dollars for the right-of-way process. That is covered by the LoSiP grant. The original three million plus uh, for design and construction has already been approved.
Yeah. So Bill in English, what is this to do?
Okay, this is basically in order to uh, and that's where I was getting here is the um. The design of the bridge plans are near completion and it's determined that we need both temporary and permanent easements. And so uh, uh, normally we would have to pay for that, but uh, this being a, a LoSiP uh, project. Uh, I was able to ask the DOT and MetroCog if this could be covered under our uh, our grant. And they said yes. So basically, because the utilities, uh, and um, they have to uh, move poles. Onto private property, so this is a temporary easement, uh, the contractor, because we are keeping the bridge one lane open. Uh, the contractor needs space to, to work, so that's another temporary construction easement. Um, unlike other projects where we have a lot more right-of-way, or maybe there's a work area nearby, on this one. Uh, there, there is very limited work area and so we have to use the private property. There's also going to be permanent easements, but these are very small areas that are um, basically waterward of their existing fences. That go from the fence to the Ash Creek. So these are small, uh, permanent uh, easements. And that's what usually we deal with, but because of these are dealerships, they're businesses, the temporary construction easements. Uh, are, you know, they do have an impact to the businesses and so therefore they have to be compensated for uh, us using their, their land.
Sure, and they are all, you, you hit the nail on the head. These are all commercial entities, is that correct?
That's correct.
And are, are they all aware that this is going on, so this isn't a surprise to any of them?
Uh, yes, definitely. I've met, I've met with them uh, several, several times. Originally, we thought we might be able to do. What they call a waiver of compensation and appraisal, if they were very small easements, but once it was determined that the utilities. Uh, and we needed the additional area for uh, you know, uh, lay down or, or storage. Uh, that uh, they were going to infect the uh, affect the businesses. So um, we, we couldn't go for a waiver and appraisal. It's too much of an impact on them.
Yeah, I understand that this is going to be, you know, a, a good thing overall. For those businesses, once this is all done, will this be helpful and. Uh, for those businesses or, or neutral or not helpful to them, you know, um, negative impact to them, do we know?
O- over- overall, it'll probably be neutral because it'll be similar to what they, they, they see now. But the, the big difference is uh, rather than, this would be a planned bridge replacement, rather than having to shut the bridge down if we did nothing. Later on.
Right. Okay, I've got nothing further on this. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it and thanks. By the way, thanks for going and getting the money for the grant to pay for this.
Oh, thanks. It's a hundred percent reimbursable, so always good news.
Music to my ears.
Well done, Bill, as usual.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item number twelve, uh, can I get a motion to consider and act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four. Eight seventy-three nineteen.
Yes, so moved.
Second, is there any discussion on this item?
Not for me.
Very good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, madam, select woman, I'd make a motion for number thirteen that we go into private executive session with Mr. Baldwin and whichever attorney he. Uh, deems necessary to discuss this item.
Okay, um, if, if you wouldn't mind, if we just wait one moment, um, I just want to ask if there's anybody on the line. Who did want to make any comments about any of those uh, items?
All fair enough.
Discuss, sorry about that. Okay, um, seeing none. Um, okay, I'm sorry, go back to your motion, Tom.
Yeah, I'd like to make the same motion that we go into private executive session on this item with Mr. Baldwin and whichever attorney he deems necessary to join us.
Absolutely, and this is um, pending litigation, uh, retirement program for employees of the town of Fairfield. Um, versus Allianz Global Investors with our town attorney. I, uh, you put a motion, I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to be going into executive session now, uh, for those who are on the line, so. Drew is running our meeting for the first time on our cell. Okay, um, I'm going to ask for a motion to come out of executive session and I would like to announce that there were no votes taken in executive session.
So moved.
And I'll second on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so on, I would like to make a motion. Uh, that the board hereby approves and ratifies the engagement of Silver, Gollum and Titel LLP by the retirement. Program for the employees of the town of Fairfield and the retirement program for the Fairfield Police and Fireman's Retirement System. Collectively, the retirement programs and authorizes Silver, Gollum and Titel LLP to continue to prosecute. The action against Allianz on behalf of the town of Fairfield and the retirement programs on the terms set forth in the retirement programs. January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty engagement letter. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion on this item?
I would just uh, motion that we approve this item, or I intend on approving this item based on advice of town, of the town's general counsel.
Very good. All right, I have no comments. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And uh, that is the end of our agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
A motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Motion to adjourn. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, I'll second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for uh, your time today.
Take care. Have a good rest, you guys.
All right, take care. Bye-bye now.